I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Marty's got a new officer to swear in tonight?
Yes, sir.
Chief Jensen.
Andrew Waddell. Your signature, others?
I, Andrew Waddell.
I, Andrew Waddell.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
Having been appointed as a patrol officer.
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Waddell comes from us from St. Croix County where he worked in jail for the last almost 10 years. He works part-time, or did work part-time, for the city of Amory. And before that, he worked part-time for the city of Clear Lake. So we've taken two or three officers from the city of Amory. So I would imagine their chief's gonna be looking at me pretty soon. But we welcome him on. He was one of our part-timers, has been on for a year part-time with us. Went through our new FTO program, through the part-timers, so he's on the street by himself. Hopefully, we'll have him on the road before the end of the month. So we'll be fully staffed again. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sir.
Gosh, you guys don't call me sir.
Give him some time.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Finison.
Here.
District One, Morissette.
Here.
District Two, Brogdon, Zabson. District Three, Bernard. Here. District Four, Wyland.
Here.
District Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District Six, Burchill.
Here.
All right, so we have a quorum. At this time, we'll take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who'd like to address the council about any item or issue that's not on tonight's agenda, but that may come before the council at a future meeting or have an impact on the City of Hudson, this is your chance to come up and speak. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the council tonight? Anyone here who'd like to speak? Okay, then we'll move into our agenda. And I'd ask that you read the consent agenda items, please.
To approve the regular meeting and close session minutes of October 19th, 2009. To approve the renewal of the conditional use permit for David Tank to use 904 Third Street as a manufacturer representative wholesales office with two non-resident employees with the following conditions: One commercial sign not greater than three square feet in area. No additional signage or lighting for purposes of commercial use identification. Permit is non-transferable. Permit is not, permit is to be reviewed again in three years, 2012. To approve the extension of the conditional use permit to Grammar Incorporated for the storage of up to 1,320 gallons of flammable or combustible liquids as identified in their application and as amended per their letter of July 15th, 2004, for a three-year period with review in November of 2012. To approve the conditional use permit to Briggs Auto Service, Matt Briggs, for a vehicle repair garage at 1300 Gateway Circle with the following conditions: The permit will be reviewed again in two years, November 2011, and tires and junk vehicles need to be kept within the fenced area. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $403,242.24. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and on the city's website. To approve the updated snow plowing policy with the revised Section 11, damage to personal property as follows: Damage to turf, plantings, landscaping, water service, to include irrigation systems, or any other structures located in the city right-of-way will not be considered for compensation. Damage to mailboxes due to excess weight of snow will not be considered for compensation. Mailboxes damaged by actual contact with city equipment will be inspected and considered for repair or replacement. The city will provide turf restoration to areas outside the city's right-of-way disturbed during, disturbed due to snow plowing. Restoration will include black dirt, seed, or in some instances, sod replacement. To deny the request to transfer the title for Beenhman Farm Outlet 4 to the city. To place on file the quarterly reports of the city clerk, the library director, the semi-annual report of the community development director, the unapproved community access board minutes of October 27th, 2009, and the library board minutes of September 14th, 2009. And that is all.
Move for approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
The consent agenda items are approved, and we will move on in our agenda to number five under the Plan Commission. Application for a certificate of compliance for a public building for police department, library, cable TV, and other municipal offices at 700 First Street and 701 Second Street, City of Hudson.
The Plan Commission recommends approval of certificate of compliance for the buildings at 700 First Street and 701 Second Street for ownership by a public entity, the City of Hudson. Intent of the City of Hudson is to use the 700 First Street building for combination library, police department, and the 701 Second Street building for potentially the cable TV, other municipal offices, and/or nonprofit organizational offices. The one issue before the Plan Commission that was generally discussed was off-street parking, the provision of off-street parking. You have to please consider that there are no specific standards for libraries, per se, because they're unique in character. The police department, what was discussed at Plan Commission, was the issue that probably between the library and the police department on a normal day would probably be somewhere between 30 and 40 off-street parking places may be of demand. Certainly, there may be instances where that's higher in particular areas, but other times of day, there may be public parking available in the parking lot between the two buildings also. So I think that is the one particular issue that caught more attention by the Plan Commission. Plan Commission does recommend approval of certificate of compliance for the public ownership of the buildings at 700 First Street, 701 Second Street by the City of Hudson.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment that this is an important step in the city's consideration of purchase of this property from Excel Energy. Another important step, of course, will be next week with the pending approval, one way or the other, by the library board of the lease of this property. And importantly, our inspection period. We might consider, I would like you to consider, when putting together the agenda for December, to allow for public comment, a public hearing before we make the final, final vote on this.
I think that would be a good idea. You're the second member of the council that's requested that, and I had concluded it would be a good idea, so I guess I concur. Is there any member of the public here tonight that came because they have a concern about the certificate of compliance or the zoning? Okay. Lee, anything? Alan? Well, there may be members of the public who would have concern about the use here, and I think at the Plan Commission, we talked about really two different things, and they're no different than any other zoning concern of this type. I mean, it is a commercial district, it's commercial property, but this is a little different in that it's public use in the police department. So one of the concerns I've heard is about noise. And I think my answer, and I think most of the people that work here in City Hall realize that we really don't have police cars leaving the police station with lights and sirens on very often. And so I don't think that that's likely to be a bother or nuisance for this new neighborhood.
It doesn't seem like it'd be any different from the current neighborhood.
Not, not very much different, but opinions could differ there, but I think that's my conclusion. In regards to parking, what we talked about at the Plan Commission is, I mean, it is a concern, and part of the concern is we hope that the library generates more and more library patrons with a bigger, better library, and so that this will be something that we may have to address and readdress as time goes on. But the current library building existed for some years before we tore down the old jail property and built that new parking lot there. And that new parking lot is somewhat over 30 spaces. This facility here, City Hall, that houses the police department currently has the municipal lot next door that holds around 30, somewhat over 30 spaces, six of which are dedicated to the police or our inspectors. So the current need for the police department is about that. I mean, we currently have room to get two or three cars indoors. We have some parking for cars on the apron downstairs, on the driveway. We have those designated spots over in the municipal lot. The need for all of that parking will move to elsewhere in downtown, so it'll actually free up some downtown parking here in this lot. For the library, the library lot is rarely full at 30 places, so when they move, the new facility, if it happens, has 17 underground spaces, of which the police department has access to use, which would be more than enough parking for police vehicles for the most part. And I think there's a moderate amount of public traffic coming to the police station to come to file a report or talk to the officers and so on, interacting. I think the new building has 52 spots on the surface. It would be my suggestion that maybe four or five of those would be dedicated to police, that probably a number of them would have signage that would say that during library hours, they're primarily for the library. But I think that the amount of parking that we're providing will be more than adequate. And so of the 69 spaces over there, I think between the police and the library currently, neither one, you know, the two of them together or independently never use 69 places. So it's hard for me to imagine. On storytime for the library, it does draw people. Currently, those people will sometimes fill the lot and spill into the neighborhood around there, but that happens during the day. And during the day, the bathhouse lot is generally got spaces available in it, and so that kind of overflow for special events.
There's only 30 here and 60 down there.
Mm-hmm. Now, if you look forward to the future and you say, "Yeah, but what if that's a bigger library and someday it's a 40,000-square-foot library and it's serving more and more people? What will happen?" I still think that this is a pretty adequate size. I mean, I went to River Falls and they have a bigger library than us, but they really don't have a bigger parking lot than this. So as Denny said, there's not really a fixed standard for how big should the parking lot be for a library. But I think what we've got here should be adequate. So at the public hearing, if there are concerns about that, and certainly there's still room to comment, but this is one of the steps that we need to go through is to do this certificate of compliance. And the import of this is that it's commercially zoned, it'll still be commercially zoned, but we'll have a certificate of compliance to use it as a public purpose instead of as a commercial building. If it's sold someday in the future, one or both of these buildings are sold, they could still be sold as a commercial purpose again. So anybody else's comments? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes, and the certificate of compliance will be granted. We'll move on then to the next part of our agenda, which is from the Finance Committee, applications for operators licenses. The committee.
Recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette has recused. The committee recommended approval of two applications, one from Jennifer Gibson, one from James Richards. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Waddell, say no. Mr. Morissette was recused, and the motion passes, and that takes us up to the item number four from Public Works. Alan, want to tell about that?
We're on downtown flood improvement.
Yep. Finance Committee recommended approval, and we altered a little bit what's in your issue sheet. The idea is to study and look for ways to improve the occasional flooding that happens in downtown, particularly in the area between Locust, between Second and Third Street, the alley between Fourth and Fifth, and the intersection of Ninth and Pitt. And the Finance Committee recommended that we would fund parts one and two on page five of the issue sheet, which was Task One, data collection, Task Two, field survey, for a total of $4,340, and to postpone the remainder until next year or a future date. You want to tell about the whys, or you have any more input?
Well, just, again, as we were in Public Works, we recommended the 13,000, but there isn't, that may not be available in the budget, and so that's why we lowered the amount. And again, if you're all aware, I'm sure everyone's aware of, if you've ever seen the water coming down Locust Street after a heavy rainstorm, this is what we're trying to redirect some of that water and take care of that water better, get it out of the basements. Chuck, do you have anything else you want to add on it?
No, it's just, it's a, it'll be a guide for future improvement projects.
Okay.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes, and we will do that. And then next, we've got some engineering for the Second and Vine. The issue is to review the engineering schedule and cost estimates for Second and Vine intersection improvements. And the Finance Committee recommended that we approve funds up to $2,000 from the 2009 Public Works operating budget for the engineering services.
I'll make, I'll move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? This project is going to be recommended to be done next year. We're applying for some grant funding that we hope to get. I hope we improve that intersection either way. And it's helpful to us to meet this schedule and to get the best pricing if we can do some of the engineering in the fall and ahead of time, so. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we've got two items concerning lawn mowing, and the Finance Committee, after some discussion, agreed with Public Works that we should approve extending our contract with Gruber Lawn Care with some amendments to what they are mowing. We learned that from the time that they bid last year that the amount, did I skip something? The amount to be bid, the amount to be mowed up at White Camp Park was fairly significantly more than what they bid on last year. I think our bid package showed two acres, and it was more like 12 at White Camp, and there were some other areas. We've also decided to add in some additional mowing that the Public Works crews were doing this year, and decided it works well to have the contractors do it. And so the recommendation is to approve extending the contract with Gruber Lawn Care for 2010 in the amount of $27,600 to include the parking lots at the boat launch, the swimming beach, Williams Park, Lakefront Park, Grandview Park, White Camp Park, and Prospect Park as part of the agreement. And as part of this motion, to go out to bid again for 2011 for the mowing. Questions or motion? Yes. There's a motion to approve and a second.
I have a question, just kind of in general, not knowing and not seeing what this next budget cycle's gonna be yet. Did we work the kinks out? Have the problems been worked out with the cutting and the relationships with the public?
I think, I think it's pretty positive. I think, general, by and large, the information that we received and coming from Tom is very satisfactory this year.
And did we save money in that department?
Yes.
Good.
I'd like to discuss, going out for bid, normally very much in favor of that, but I believe we might be more secure with our finances if we were to instead go beyond a one-year contract, only because economic indicators are that while employment is lagging behind, production levels are rising, and we will probably next year be coming out of this recession. And normally, at a time like that, you can expect that to be followed by an inflationary period. I wonder if we might not say we would do this for more than one year with a cost of living increase of 3% or so, so that we can lock it in and not suffer from that inflationary period that follows a recession.
I think that might be a good point. You know, it should be pointed out that, yes, there were some kinks, and we were doing something we hadn't done before, and we worked hard on putting together a bid, request for proposals, set of specs, and a bid document last year. A lot of time went into it, and we advertised, and we had over 20 bidders, and some pretty aggressive bids. It was pointed out to us tonight that even with this increase, that there's more mowing going on next year, and it's gonna be increased, that for this one that's before you right now, with the increase, he'd still be below the next lowest bidder from last year. So it was a very aggressive bid, and we took it, and I think the relationship has worked out pretty well. I mean, there's, it's different to do quality control and respond to input from the public and so on, when then you have to communicate that onto an independent contractor as opposed to an employee. But having done that for a lot of projects, we do it all the time with construction projects and so on, I think our Public Works staff did that pretty well, and we're, you know, as the summer went on, what you call the kinks, I think, are worked out. The question of would they be willing to make this a two-year? You know, they were both here earlier and are not now, and so we're not really in a position to do that right now. I mean, I guess if you want to approve a one-year, I can go back and talk with them about a two-year, and we could come back with that at a future meeting. We discussed in Finance that the size of this is such, and it's a service contract, that we're not under state law requirement to go to bid or not. But our own procurement policy directs us that contracts above a certain amount, we should bid periodically. And the other thing we didn't do last year was give the option of a multi-year bid, and we could have done that, and we could do it next time we go out to bid. And we were a little leery, we, it was new water, we weren't sure we wanted to jump in with a multi-year contract right away, having seen the way it's gone, and maybe that is the way to do it, so that we are locked in for a longer period of time, and it would let them buy equipment and know that they've got the job for a longer period of time. We might actually get some advantages for both parties to that.
But the way the agreement reads now, is it's a annual contract?
Well, the agreement read that it could be, it may be renewed annually up to three times by written mutual consent of both the city and the contractor. Now, you know, the terms of the contract changed a little bit over time, and we found some corrections to what needed to be mowed, and then we added on some more things that we wanted to be mowed. And, and so it isn't exactly a renewal on the same terms this time, it's a renewal with some adjustments.
I guess I'd only be comfortable pursuing a two-year agreement if we went out to bid now. Yeah, then I would, then I would consider it, but I'm not at all comfortable going two years with these, without bidding.
And they're not here. I thought they might be here, but they're not, so.
Well, they were, and I think they probably assumed that we would go with the recommendation that came out of the first meeting that they came to, and they don't realize that sometimes we don't do that.
Okay.
So, but we've got a motion and a second, and I think I'll go back and say, "I agree with your comment, and it's probably not too late to do that, but I think you'll probably have to either approve or amend to postpone here," as your pleasure is.
I'll just move ahead.
Go ahead. Anyone else's comments?
I think you should have the conversation.
Yeah, I'll do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. The second one is similar. Again, this one was for the road right-ofways, and the contractor is Becker Lawn Care. Again, we're adding some additional mowing to be done, we're adding some additional buildings, or a additional building. And the Finance Committee made a similar recommendation that we go ahead and extend with the adjustments, and so the contract for 2010 would be for $13,956.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
The same question, Alan. Have the expectations been met? Because I know a couple times with this right-ofway, there was weeds all over into the street.
I think it was a question of what were required to be cut, and I think those things have all been, you know, straightened out. Tom was very happy with what was going on.
We're voluntarily extending. If we'd been unhappy, we could have easily gone to bid, but Mr. Zooli and the Public Works staff generally feel like this is, relationship has worked pretty well here as we got into the year. Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we will move to Public Works, the review proposals and consider awarding refuse and recycling contract. Alan?
If you can see it on your second page, one, just one comment on the change that Mr. O'Malley caught in our, in our proposal that was given to us last Tuesday in Public Works. There is no charge for the door side pickup for the physically disabled, and there had been a $5 charge, and I guess I, I think we, it's okay, everything's okay with that. So that was a change that, you see, it's kind of crossed off, but that does not, we managed to have that waived again. So we recommend Veolia.
Second. If that's a motion, I'll say.
Yes.
That was a motion and a second to award the five-year contract to Veolia for the refuse and recycling. Any discussion? So the costs are going, go ahead.
So we've decided to stay with the weekly recycling?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have the containers on hand, we have about 200 surplus for any new residents moving in. Seems to be the most efficient thing to do.
What were you saying?
No, I just was curious if that discussion took place.
Also, we did, the part we did not discuss is that if you move to an every other week, a larger container for recycling, and every other week, how are you going to get everybody to remember which week is which? You know? You know?
They figured it out in Green Bay. I don't know. I think we could manage here.
Well, they have a football team and we don't.
Well, rates are going up. I guess we talked about who to award to and maybe we should just briefly touch on this so the people that are watching this at home, I mean. Let me just read this off. So we have three different sizes of the roll-off household dumpsters. The 35 gallon size in our current contract was $9.35 a month. In the new contract, it goes up $2. Am I correct there, Alan? Is it 11.35?
That's correct.
The 65 gallon, the medium size was $9.59. In the new contract, it will be $12.45. And then the large size, 95 gallon size was $11.11 and in the new contract, it'll be $13.90. So what happens here is we ask for a five-year contract and then we're, we've got a, a rate for, for this. A year ago, there was legislative action that increased the tipping fees and the, our contractor asked for a mid-contract increase because that was outside of what had been anticipated and it was a pretty significant cost and, and I said no. We've got a contract, it's up in a year, that'll be your chance, everyone will be able to bid on our business again. And you can see that waste management bid as well and came in with a slightly higher bid. And so I think this is the fairest way to do it rather than negotiating midstream, but it should, while the consumers will see an increase, this is a once every so often increase and then it's fixed again. And there was action by the legislature on this that immediately meant that there would be a pass-through cost to all the consumers. The only reason it was delayed for us is we have a multi-year contract. For places that didn't have a multi-year contract, on the next month's bill, they got an immediate increase. So that, that was something that's out of our hands and, and I just wanted to point that out. Any other comments on this? Lee? No?
I guess I have one question about recycling. Is it, is recycling volume pickup unlimited? In other words, if someone's an avid recycler, can they put out more than what fits in the bin? Can they get more than one bin?
Well, I shouldn't say this in front of their representative, but we do that every single week and we do not get charged more than the base fee.
And I'm just wondering if that's part of the contract, but.
It's not. Recycling is tough because we're all committed to the goal and the concept of recycling, but a lot of people don't realize that recycling actually has a cost and you're paying for it and. For many years in Wisconsin, after recycling was made mandatory, there was a, a tax on businesses to pay for residential recycling and that was kind of phased out and, and as it went, what's in the recycling? How much is it? $3? $3.15 of the monthly cost is actually for the cost of recycling. And there was a time when we had a flat fee and everyone paid the same. We didn't have volume-based pricing for the trash either and we decided to go to a volume base so that if you want to have a smaller dumpster, then you pay a little bit less. You know, the, without going out to rebid this again, I mean, the, the best we did was to look at that every other week in the larger bin and so on like that. I'm not sure how we would do it. Would you, would you have it next time as you could have one bin for your regular price and if you're going to have two bins, you pay $2 a month extra? I mean, that would be in keeping with the idea of if you want the larger rollout dumpster, you pay $2 more than the people that have the mil-size one.
Let's just sign this contract and not give them any ideas.
But is that what you're getting at, Lori?
Stop talking.
Just asking a question.
Well, she's asking a question.
Yeah.
Let's just vote on this, okay?
Do you want to discourage recycling?
No, we don't.
No.
Right.
And we do double the, we put out two bins of recycling every single Monday and not receive.
Oh, so you do have a second bin?
He wants to call a question before you.
Well, let's vote on this and sign it up for another five years before they realize anything.
I think it's good to go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And we'll award the contract to Veolia.
Aren't you glad you came?
Well, it wouldn't have necessarily changed the contract, it's all how we charge our customers. I mean, what she's, what, what Lori is suggesting is that since there is a cost to recycling, if you're putting out lots and lots more recycling, maybe you ought to be paying more for it. Does any other community do that?
Coming from Eau Claire, basically what we do over there is if people put additional containers up, we've got.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting we be charged extra, I'm just suggesting whatever contract we sign ought not discourage people.
Didn't we already vote on this agenda item? Update on projects, Chuck?
Yes, good evening, council. Well, we're getting very close to wrapping up all of our projects for the year. There's minor work order items left on 11th Street, the, the road improvement project and all those maintenance items we did through that project, that's pretty well wrapped up other than final payment. Cooley Road, it, it appears that Tom's made a decision to delay the pave, the milling and the paving work until next spring. I'm 100% supportive of that from the perspective of the contract's willing to hold its prices and, you know, we are, we are in a November situation and it does look like there is a large enough window to get the work done, you know, should that have decision been made. But once you mill off that first layer, you know, you're essentially committed to doing everything and, and you know, sometimes we mill off that top layer and, and the, the cracks instead of getting narrow, narrower, they get wider and there's more patching and so there's just a concern there. And there's also some value with, with the subsequent days of nice weather and the traffic being on the warmer pavement, needing it, so to speak. So that's where that is. Is there any questions regarding Cooley?
Well, I don't like that decision, but I think it could have been done. There's been a lot, you said it yourself a couple of meetings ago, take a day to do it. And it was 50 degrees today. Forecast to be another couple of 50 days in the next couple of days.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one, it's a one long day of milling, you know, possibly spilling over to two with a, you know, a day or two of patching and then, you know, followed by another day of paving.
I think Randy, the decision that, that we made or that we tried to make there is that we sure don't want to be in a situation where we've got milled off and the bad weather hits and we just figured if the pricing stays the same, the street is not in horrible condition for one more, six more months, five more months. So that's why we made the decision. I, I, I would agree with that, we should, should wait on it. I just, man, if we didn't get it done, it would be.
Yeah, you'd be driving on that, that all winter long.
And trying to, trying to snowplow on that, it would be, so that was why we did.
We've got a, a tighter spec for the temperature required when paving than some do. What, what's, the state uses a lower temperature figure than we.
Yeah, you know, essentially anything below 50 degrees, surface temperature, it's the call of the city engineer, Public Works director. WISDOT will actually let that number go down to, was it 36 degrees?
So what's been happening is, I mean, a little bit of, there were days when we didn't want to be paving because we'd rather have the best quality outcome when the state and stimulus projects and so on are going on and so the, you know, the paving crews have been going and doing state work where we're basically saying we don't want to do it when it's this cold. Well, as time goes on, I think that commitment to a quality product and outcome is something that we need to stick to. And it's, it's going to look iffy.
I see the life expectancy is less when you pave at a colder temperature.
This would have been a 2010 project, except that we came in under budget on some of our other paving and we decided after the other projects were coming in that we would pull this off of 2010 and try to shoehorn it into 2009 and that was good. It was a good idea, we got a lot of good work done, we got good pricing this year because of the economy and so on. So we're still going to be locked on that price and, you know, when you balance it all out, this is a decision and, you know, I guess I, I would concur with it. Anybody has a crystal ball on the weather, but it's, it's been pretty cool. How about other projects?
Realistically, there's, you know, there's a possibility of one or two smaller private developments moving forward yet this year, but essentially, you know, you know, it appears that the, the Heritage Green projects that they're going to start next green, spring is my understanding, there's some, just kind of cleanup on the road improvement projects within Heritage Greens. Goodwill is on hold and, you know, a couple of minor things on Tower Road, but that's essentially complete as well.
If I could add, one, one more thing that we're trying to do in Public Works, we're going to try and grade our projects after we're done with them all. What we're trying to do is balance the need of the public to do a good job and the contractor and how they, how they completed their project. And I don't know, did we officially give a grade to the 11th Street project, Chuck?
Yeah, you know, I threw out a B minus. I think.
I think there was a C plus that was brought in too, something.
That was mine.
Okay. So we're going to try and, and do that, input from you folks and public input on how we do. I think one of the issues we had with 11th Street is the expectations may have been higher or somehow, somewhere it got out that was to be done before school and I don't think any of the project was supposed to be done before school. I think it was October 8th or 9th when our project was. So I think those are the kind of things that we have to do and the other issue there is they were working 12-hour days, four days a week, and then they come Friday and there's nobody there. And I think people say, what are they doing? Even though they're working 48 hours a week on the project. So I think those are the kinds of things that we need to get out in public and, and there will be days where there's nothing going on. But I think in general, the public looks at that and says, how come there's nobody working there? So maybe it's more of an informative thing that we need to do a better job of informing the public when this is going to happen or how it's going to happen. So that's what we're trying to do and then we're going to grade them out and how can we do better next time?
And case in point, if you look at like the Second and Vine intersection project.
Yep.
Start those discussion early, you know, incorporate some interim deadlines or however we want to work that. So, you know, there's a, generally a little bit of a trade-off if you, you impose more deadlines and control over them, you know, you may see, you know, a slight increase in cro, in costs. So it's a balancing act and there was a, a couple of other lessons learned, you know, as far as coordination with the other departments and, and, you know, inviting a third party to do some repair work on that project that we've talked through and we'll, we'll incorporate in future projects.
Okay, anyone else have other questions for Chuck or update on projects, comments, questions? Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Communications and items for future agendas, any older person. City Attorney? Administrator?
Budget hearing will be prepared in a cell phone meeting at 6:45. We've got a woman there, copy, we'll put public at the front desk and as the final budget is put together, we'll have updates available to the public.
Well, I could announce too that we did get a time for an additional Finance Committee meeting just on the budget, which is going to be on Wednesday night this week at 5:30. The outcome of that, I believe, will be to have a Finance Committee recommendation to the council. If you want a budget book with it as it is right now, it's getting there right now. There might be some final tweaking going on. Or if you'd rather, you can wait and get one after that work session on Wednesday. And then we'll have a couple of weeks to go through it and we'll have that meeting on the 16th.
And our hope is that if everything goes through that evening, that we can get the information to the county that week, by the end of that week, so they'll have it and that will hopefully get us in the hopper to get our tax bills. Not that people want the tax bill sooner, but there are people that want to pay it in, in December of the year. So the sooner we get the information to the county, the sooner they can get the bills back to us.
I don't usually do this, but I've been asking Chief Jensen every time I see him if they caught our bank robbery yet and today he told me they made an arrest.
Good.
So that's good. I think that's it.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. We are adjourned, thank you for coming.